You needed to go, that we're just really trying to, you know, push it off to somebody else. One, they wanted a lower enlisted guy to go, but two, they wanted an excuse not to have to go show feelings. Like, how did you sell that as a leader to say, hey, you're going whether you want to or not?
Well, that was a great thing about when I got back was I had been through it and I could, I could attest to it. And I, and I told them, you know, one, what a great time it was, but I think the most important thing that I got out of it, it's not just a great time, I made honest connections and lifelong friendships with people that I never would have met before. Josh McCain is a lifelong friend of mine now. Ned Schwing, who was the other volunteer on my program. I will, I will be in contact with these, these people for the rest of my life amongst others. Aaron Hagan, Bryce, the fishing guide that we went with. It just really, and that's the thing is, we live in a very secretive world, almost a, you know, we don't interact with civilians because we can't answer a lot of questions about what we do. We don't like talking about what we do. And so for me, this was a way to really connect with civilians, some civilians that really cared. And, and realizing that people, there are people out there that care about what we do. That was really, that was just huge for me.
Yeah, you know, and it's like, you went to a program and then you were like hooked. And you, you were like Jack coming back, you know? What, what was it about it that made you, makes you want to keep coming back to something like Big Sky Bravery? And turn around and help like in that capacity?
Like Skip was saying, it's that friendship and that brotherhood that you immediately have with the guys. So I've been very fortunate, I've been able to go back two other times as a volunteer. The second time I went back as a volunteer, the first time I volunteered, didn't know anybody else other than Josh when I got there. And right when I got there, he's like, hey man, you're gonna come with me? And we, I went and crashed a wedding. And I met all the Boeheimers of Big Sky Bravery and it was Mitch, Dustin, everybody. And immediately, the entire organization accepted me into their family. To where I am 100% a part of that family now. And it's that brotherhood and that camaraderie, that friendship that you have with them, it's just, it's infectious. It reminds me of my, my brothers and teammates at work. To where I'll do anything and everything for my brothers, teammates at work, at war, wherever it may be. I'll drop, drop that on a dime to go help them in any way. It's the exact same feeling I have with the guys from Big Sky Bravery. It's just immediately, it's like, these are my brothers, these are my family now. And it's, it truly has changed my life. It's one where it's like, here in a couple of years when I retire, that's where I'm going. I'm immediately moving out to Montana to be part of.
Yeah. And you know, the fun part about this whole thing too, is this isn't like a beach vacation where we're like Mai Tai-ing and chilling. It's like, hi, welcome to Montana. This is Beehive Basin. We're gonna hike to the top of it. We don't care if your lungs aren't, aren't ready for it. You know, like, it just like straight from the airport, lava lake. I remember, I remember when we did that the second time, because we couldn't get in the house. And it was like, oh, we're just gonna go hike lava lake real quick. And an hour and a half later soaking wet, like, all right, that was an awesome first day. And then we added the workout at the pit, like, how is it, you know? Skip, I'll ask you, like seeing a community like Bozeman come around an organization like Big Sky Bravery? And like, you know, Ed and Kathy and all them, how awesome is that to see? What you said, you know, you guys live in the secretive bubble. Like, how great is it to see like that specific directed support for an organization like this?
Yeah, I don't know what it is about Montana, but there's definitely something special about it. I had never been, this is June 2018, was the first time I'd ever been to Montana. I've been back, I, I think 11 or 12 times since then.
Wow.
Yeah, like I keep going back. I mean, a lot of it, I have a lot of friends there now that I go back and see. But there's just something about it. I've been back winter, summer, I just keep going back. And I, I, I fully plan on probably settling down there at some point. It's just something special about it. The, the, the community there is really special. The, there's so many things to do, fly fishing, skiing, hiking, it's just beautiful. It, and you know, it brings, it brings me joy, honestly. And I talk about that a lot and how I think, I think we've, we, you know, we, we spend a lot of time doing some, some pretty, I don't want to say bad things, but you know, some dangerous things. And you forget what, what joy is a lot of times. And I'll tell you, the, the first time I kind of, it hit me, I was, it was the, the second day of our task force. And Josh and I were riding by ourselves, you know, down a mountain, we're on horseback. The sun was coming up and I was just, I was just amazed at the, the view. And I, I realized right then, I'm like, wow, this is joy. This is the joy that I've heard about that I'm missing. And it was just, it was amazing.
That's right. Well, Josh, do you think we should answer, ask some of those internet questions now?
Yes, I do. And guess what? Zoom, I just got a notification that we have a question down here.
Yes.
Who can actually do it live on here. The first one comes from Linda in Oregon. Linda says, do you have, this is, this is both to Skip and to Joey Jeff. Do you have any other resources like this currently at work? If not, have you ever had a resource like this? Linda from Oregon, good question.
Jelly, go first.
Okay, go ahead.
At my organization, like, we, like, we've got psych docs, we've got physical therapists for rehab, we've got strength boosters, things like that. But there's nothing that at all compares to anything like this. Like, I guarantee you, you take a bunch of those operators and it's like, hey, you need to go sit down with the psych doc and talk about your feelings. And Roger's like, okay, like, we don't really do that. Like, that's none, none of our personalities, like, it just doesn't happen. It's, there's zero things like this at my organization that can affect us the way that this does. It's like, there's nothing at work. Like, we can't go take a weekend off here or there. They try to do family retreats and things like that, but it just, it's not the same. It is not the same at all. It's getting away physically and mentally, emotionally, everything away from North Carolina. And what we do is the biggest aspect of it, I would say. And it's just going out to Montana, completely forgetting about work. There's places where it's like, hey, you don't have Saturday sessions, like, you completely disconnect where you can truly just relax and let it, let it all go and just truly be at peace.
Yeah, Skip, you had, you had something to add?
Yeah, I'll say I agree that there, there's nothing that compares to this. Obviously, the military tries very hard to make sure everybody is well, you know, both mentally and physically. But there's limits to what they can, they can spend money on. You know, the chaplains will do marriage retreats to kind of bring, bring married couples together. And that's great. It's a weekend, you know, we can get away from the kids and you kind of focus on your relationship. But the thing that's different about this is this is getting right with yourself, which, you know, is, is different. And, and what I really like about Big Sky's vision, just, you know, and I know this from talking to Josh, is, you know, the vision is bring guys out, get them right with themselves, and then they can bring their families out later and share that experience with their families. And that's huge. That is, I mean, that's, that's next level stuff right there. Because that's, that's where the, you know, if you, you have a happy family, you're gonna have a happy life. And so being able to show and share this, this experience that you have with your family is, that's a game changer. And there's nothing like it that the military can do.
Absolutely. And, and having, you know, like personally having, you know, been working in nonprofit for about four years now and knowing different, different organizations that do different things. I know you guys have access to other nonprofits that focus on professional development, personal development, all those kinds of things, which are totally necessary. And they have these, they have these pathways where they have programs that have intention, you know, a direction and ending to where there's a, there's a product at the end. And that's what, what really entices me and what I love about BSB is it's literally like this mental and emotional like pasture that we can, we can allow you guys to go out there and just like, no, we're just gonna let them be, be here and do these things. And there's no like, well, how are you feeling, you know, kind of thing? It's just, let's just get out here and let nature do the, do the healing and, and let nature do the opening too. Cause I mean, even like, there has not been a single guy that I've seen on our program that's been like crass or mean or anything. It's just, you know, we always have that like cards to our chest. And it's great to see from like Tuesday to Wednesday where it's just like, everybody's happy. And it seems that they can let that guard down and they can, they can really like run mentally and emotionally on that week. And like, that's what it's for. It's just that, to let everything else catch back up. And it's like, all right, time to turn it back on and get back to it. Let's do this. And that's, that's what I really love about it and what keeps me coming back every year too. Josh, you got, you got another one?
I got, I got a bunch more. See how many we can get through. Let's see, Jeff, actually, I don't think this was you, because you live in North Carolina. Jeff from New York. And Skip, you kind of already answered this, but we get, I mean, maybe out of a different perspective. At what point during the task force Jeff said, did you say, hey, this is working and this is what I need?
Is this to me?
Either one.
Yeah, I think I described it. For me, it was, it was very early on. And I don't think I realized it at the time. I don't think I realized it until the last day, just how special this was. You know, I, I remember thinking, wow, this is really a great time. I really like these people. I really like what they're doing. But we do a bit of a ceremony at the end. And it was at that ceremony, I mean, I broke down. I, I broke down and cried in front of men that I just met. And that's, I hadn't done that in, I don't know, since I was a teenager maybe, maybe earlier than that. I don't know. It was kind of crazy. So that, that was when I realized it. But I think, you know, I, I enjoyed it all the way through for sure. Jelly or Jeff, how about you?
Jelly, let's just call him, because we're all gonna keep doing it.
It sounds so weird calling you Jeff. I feel like you're in court.
Jelly. Yeah, much like Skip, like immediately I knew, I was like, this is the place I need to be. The first two days, it was just amazing being out in Montana and doing the hikes, getting on the horseback and hiking up. But the one point that probably hit me the hardest with it was on Wednesday, we went out, out on side by side, thanks to Ed and Kathy. And we were hiking up this one big peak that we always do out there. And once I got to the top of it, I, I got over the ridge line, I looked out and I was just like, holy cow. And right then, one of my teammates that was there with me looked at me like, the excitement and the happiness he saw on my face. He's like, he looked at me and he goes, hey man, like I've known you for 10 years. I've never seen you smile once like this. Like, just the sheer fact that my teammates and brothers are seeing me happy. And then since then, they all know and see, like, I get back to North Carolina, they're like, something's different. And they're like, and they know, like, when I'm in Montana, that's where I'm happy. That's where I'm at peace and I can truly be at peace and truly relax. It was truly like halfway through that week and then after that, it was just like pure happiness, getting back to my, like who I was before I joined and dealt with all the stuff that we've dealt with. And it's just like, the next three days were just probably one, three of the happiest days of my life.
I figured it would have been when you built that like Burning Man sized bonfire that we had camping net. Like that, like, I'm surprised it didn't melt tents. Like, he was so happy. He was like cutting the wood and just cut and cut and cut. I think Steven has like hours of like wood cutting B-roll audio from Jelly cutting wood for this bonfire that kept the entire mountain sized one. It kept it small all night. It's crazy.
All right, so I've got another question. And before I answer this next question, you know, I just, I want to say both to Skip and to Jelly, just thank you for your honesty, you know, with those answers. I know it's not, it's not easy, but I remember the farewell with Skip and Ned and I were standing around. And the, the crazy thing about the task forces is, is sometimes you don't know if it's working. You know, I think that's with anything in life. You hope that it is and you're giving everything you can. And, you know, you have a structured environment for the most part, as much as destructive as we can be. But you don't really know how it worked until that, that last night. And I just remember Ned and I still talk about that. And Ned and I's friendship from, you know, before that was, was strong, but it's even stronger now after the vulnerability that him and I shared that week being the only volunteers. And then seeing your honesty that night, Skip, I mean, that was just, it was absolutely incredible, man. And, and Jelly, I don't remember which one of your, one of your teammates it was, but he said that, he said, before you came out to the task force, you know, you were going through, you were in a dark place in your life and there wasn't a lot of happiness. You were grumpy all the time. And it just, they, they wanted you to, to feel, you know, free and to feel the way that you are right now. And I couldn't believe that they said that, because, you know, I, I, I think the program happened fast for you. And, you know, the effects of it, but I couldn't see, you know, that angry person. I couldn't see the person that, you know, in every single time that I interacted with you that week, you were smiling. I remember one time we were driving and we had, so just to brief everybody, we have a van now, this, this, this big Sprinter van. And we house everybody in it, which is awesome. Thank you to the donors. Before that, we used my truck almost every single time. So you get, you get three volunteers and then four operators in your truck at the exact same, you know, that's the only resource that you, I think I saw it was five of you guys came up. And so we're, we're backing up and somebody says they see a bear and so we're all just going straight tourists and, oh my God, where's the bear? I'm backing up, I have a backup camera in my truck and Jelly was sitting in the back. And next thing I know, the camera is on and Jelly's face just goes over. I don't need, I can't do it now because I have to climb on the roof. But those are just some of the small things that you did that I couldn't believe that. And, you know, you're a true testament for, for a couple of different things, Jelly. And number one is, is you have such a huge heart, man. And number two, you and Skip both have just been huge advocates, you know, internally for the mission, getting your teammates out there and getting, you know, the right people. So just hats off to both you guys for your vulnerability on, on, on the Zoom chat. So this one doesn't have a name to it, so it's.
And I got a Facebook question after that one, so.
Okay. This one is, is directed both of them. So Skip, when you were in your organization, how many days a year were you, were you gone? And then Jelly, I'll let you answer it after Skip.
So probably on average, you're gone about half the year. Really, we, deployment wise, we're, we're gone for about four months. But then, you know, you spend another two, two plus months away on training and whatnot. And then the other thing on top of that is there's an alert cycle as well to where you can't leave. You're, you're stuck at home. And so that, that really takes a toll on the families. And if it takes a toll on the families, it takes a toll on you. You know, when, when most of your life, you're not free to, to go on vacation or to go do the things that you and the family want to go do, that, that really does, it's really tough. And so, you know, being able to get away for a solid week and just focus on you, I mean, that's why, that's one of the reasons why this is such a great program. And, and for the command to actually say, yes, I want you to go and do this, it's, it's huge. Jelly, what do you think?
For us, we're, we're gone a little bit more than the other guys, just basis, because our unit, we work with the other two units very closely. And when we work with one of the units, we have to go move up to their location for four months of the year, let alone do their four month deployment, on top of going on all their trips for their training. On top of it, then we have to keep our currencies for our trains. So we're gone at a minimum 200 days a year about, when we're running with the guys. And that's on a good year. There's years where I've been gone 300, 300 plus for several years. And it's just, depending on the year, depending on the training cycle that we're doing, it's, there's times we're gone a lot. And then like Skip was saying, there's times where we're stuck at home. But when we're at home, it's not like we can do things. It's, we literally, we're stuck to the local area, can't go anywhere, we're attached to our phones. So it, it just wears on you mentally, even when you're sitting at home doing that, because you have to constantly be on that heightened state of alert. So it's just one of those things that's always wearing on you. So when you can get that opportunity to just get away for that week, that's difficult, as it was like Skip saying, it's like, to pull yourself away from that, from work, because we all love what we're doing. We have a blast doing it, but it's just like, there's times you need to just step away for a minute and take a break. And for me, I'm very grateful now, like Josh calls me up and says, hey, I got a program these dates. Or, hey, can you give, send me one guy for this program? And I get, do that awesome piece of running around my unit, asking my brothers, knowing the guys that have been dealing with stuff, just came back from a deployment or whatever it may be, that are kind of hurting. And I can go up to them and be like, hey man, I need to take this week off. Like, I've got a once in a lifetime experience for you to where I want to change your life like it changed mine. And like, I know guys that are on my program, it saved their marriage, it saved my life. It's like little things like that. It's, I'm trying to get to all of my teammates and all of my brothers. Because every, every single one of us need to get out there and experience this, just because you need that time to relax and get back to life.
Yeah, I mean, people don't realize how much, you know, it's, you guys, you guys spend, I wouldn't say very little, but like, people don't realize how much time's not spent boots in the sand or wherever. It's the training, it's the validation on both sides of the house that has to happen, like you said, with the, with the other units and following their training cycles. It is, we see the iceberg that floats above the water, but man, there is so, so much behind it. And like, man, just hearing from the guys, it is exhausting. And from, from 2001 on, man, it has not stopped for the special operations community. Ranger Regiment has been forward and forward since day one. And, and it doesn't look like they're stopping either. And programs like this, that just allow that like mental, emotional, just kind of pause are awesome. And it's great to see and hear the stories from you guys with your smiles on your faces and, and the impact that you're having for your guys that are on the programs and the ones that come here too. So I've got a Karen Arnold from Facebook. She is asking, what can civilians do to make your deployments better? Skip, I'll let you answer that one first.
That's a good question.
You know,
Don't just say an entire care package of COVID-19.
You know, there's, there's not, and, and here's the thing, deployments are great. I mean, they, the, you know, I, I've never had, it was the time of my life. I just, I was just, you know, reflecting over this, during this COVID, you know, situation that we're in. I watched some, some old videos and I, those were the happiest days of my life, deploying with my, my team. So I, I would say just, you know, Americans in general, remember that, that there are men and women deployed for our country. And in that, I think that's what gets to me is, we watch the news and there's, there's really not a, you know, it seems like America is more interested in what Beyonce is doing or, you know, you know, in football. And, you know, they forget that, that there are people deployed. So thanks for the question, Karen, but I would say just, just think about us and remember us. And yeah, that, I think that's, that's important.
You're absolutely right. Jelly, anything to add?
Yeah, I can agree with Skip, like deployments, like that's where we're having, like, we're doing our job. We're doing what we trained months and years and years upon. And we're out there like doing our job. It's hard work, but it's fun for us. Like, I know it kind of sounds weird, but hey, it's fun for us to deploy and actually go do our job. One thing that I absolutely always loved seeing was the little letters from kids.
I was gonna say that.
The little letters from kids and the little drawings from kids. The funniest things you, you will ever see are on some of these cards that some church sends from all these little kids that like drew it up in Sunday school and it's like, those are, are in the, on the walls in all of our hooches that we stay in. It's like, you go into each little team area and there's always the little cards from kids. And those always strike a, strike a note to me. I'm just like, seeing all these little kids just, hey, good luck, hope you come back. And like some of the funny things they say.
Dude, just like massive guns, like, you're gonna kill everybody.
Now you're like, I'm like, I'm with you. And those are the people that were like, yeah, we're over here fighting for these little kids. Just awesome.
Yeah, and I, I, if I can add, you know, I've started, one thing crossed my mind, you know, as far as like you guys said, deployments are where you do your job. And like, deployments have changed over the years. I remember 2001, sitting in a Connex, waiting 35 minutes to get on the phone with a freaking hookup from Germany that had a five second delay. And like, that ain't happening anymore. Like, I remember waiting at the mail office for my care packages for like the lickies and chewies. That's not the, that's not happening anymore. Like, deployments have taken a turn. So I, I've started to tell people, you know that energy that you feel like, I want to write somebody overseas? You find somebody that you haven't talked to in a while and write them a letter. How, talk to them, talk to somebody that you know, that you, that you haven't spoken to a while. And use, be grateful that men and women are fighting right now to give you that privilege and that time and space to be able to connect with the people that you loved or spent time with at one time. But whether it's busyness or personal disconnect, disconnection, that you don't speak to them anymore, to sit there and be like, yeah, I could write somebody that I know. And have that feeling of like, there are many women helping that have made this possible for me.
That's good answers. Rob, no idea where Rob's from. What do you think the biggest disconnect is between civilians and members of the special operations community? Jelly, I'll let you answer this one first.
Biggest disconnect, the commitment and dedication that we all give to this country, let alone our brothers and ourselves, the years of training so we can do the job. I don't think people truly, fully realize and understand, like, this isn't just something that come weekend, I can hang my hat up and not have to deal with anymore. It's, it's our lives, it's everything we do. It's, we have, like, I know I personally, I got crazy things going on in my head all the time. So it's like, I can't sleep because my head's, brain's always running, thinking that. It's things like that where it's just like, we're always on alert, we're always ready, we're always dedicated, trying to continuously move forward with it.
I, you know, I think, and, and it's gonna always be with us. You know, I've been out of the army for 13 years. Skip's been out for one year. You're on your way pretty soon, you know, like, it's, it's still fully ingrained, you know? The Ranger Creed, it lives and breathes in this soul and it will until I cease to breathe. It's not something, like you said, that we hang up when we're done, even, you know? Skip, I know you will live the creed till the day you die too. And it's, it's awesome to know there are other people out there. And, and we can, we can be apart for months at a time and come back and like, we had never, we never left each other. And to have that brotherhood and to keep expanding that brotherhood is, is awesome.
I would say, to me, the biggest disconnect, it's, it's a two-way street. You know, we, we disconnect ourselves on purpose because we, a lot of times, we don't, we don't want to add, to answer those questions. We don't want to feel awkward when people, you know, want to ask us about what we do or even thank you for, for your service. That, I always feel very strange when, when somebody thanks me for my service. I don't know what to say. I'm not, I'm not saying don't do it, because some people really like that. For me, and I think for a lot of people, you know, we, we just, we want to be treated equals. You know, we, we don't want to be treated any different. Ask us about our, our family, you know? But a lot of, there's a lot of things that we can't talk about. And I think, I think that's part of that disconnect is, we disconnect ourselves so we don't have to, to interact like that.
And just quick, Kathy from Canyon Adventures said, virtual hug to everybody, love all of them.
Love you Kathy.
Love you Kathy, thank you. No name on this one. What is the one thing you would tell other teammates as advice before they come out that you wish you could have told yourself? Skip?
I'd say go in with an open mind, connect early with, with everybody there. Make a connection and just enjoy it. I mean, you're, you're always going, anything, a little bit hesitant, you know, a little reserved. I'd say just go in, dive in, dive in headfirst and, and just take in everything that you can. Because, you know, it'll be over before you know it.
Yeah, I'd say pretty much the exact same thing as Skip, just having an open mind, open heart. What experience you're about to have, like, it's, all my guys are like, hey, what do we need to bring this? I was like, hey man, don't worry about like, Josh and the guys have it. Like, if you don't have something, we'll take care of it. And like, it's there for you, but it's just go there and have fun. That's the biggest thing, just have fun.
Decompress, let us do, you know, it's funny, I'm glad Skip that you got the, yeah, you're gonna come out as a volunteer. Because we got the last one, I just ran, we did the same thing to another guy. And he came up to me, he's like, all right, what do you need me to do? I'm like, get the hell back there. And he's like, what? I'm like, I'm volunteering shit here. Get over there, you're having fun. Like, nothing provides me more happiness than to like make breakfast. I honestly, I think that's why Josh keeps me around is because I know how to cook. And like, nothing makes me happier than making breakfast and dinners and just like seeing people's faces light up around a table with other guys and other brothers, you know, night after night, cooking freaking bratwurst in the middle of the woods on a freaking rock that's like exploding under. on a freaking rock that's like exploding underneath of it, like it was memories after memories of that stuff, man. Josh, I gotta say, thank you buddy for, for putting the effort into putting this thing together, man. Cause I'm sure you've had a lot of doors slammed in your face at one point and you just kept going, man. You just kept, no, you knew that this was necessary and just like your brother-in-law said, keep doing the right things and the right people are gonna notice. And they sure as hell did.
Go ahead Skip.
Josh, there's a couple of questions on the Zoom call. I don't know if you can see them, I just don't want to leave those people out.
No, I got it. Q and A.
Susan, let's see, uh, what can we do better for you? How can we make a better experience for your brothers and sisters?
Um, wow, like honestly, there's not much you can do better. Uh, it's, it's already, uh, it's, it's a pretty perfect program. Um, I, I know we're never satisfied with that. We were never have, you know, we always want to improve. I would say, uh, you know, don't, don't, uh, don't be so stuck to a schedule. Um, you know, be able to take, make it audible and, and change, change the, you know, change the schedule if, if that's kind of what, what needs to happen. Um, I think a lot of times, you know, we get stuck in our heads and I, I volunteered for a program as well. So I, I understand, you know, you have, you have goals and you have, uh, an idea of how it's supposed to go. But sometimes it, it doesn't go like that. And sometimes you need to just adjust, you know? Um, and so just, I'd say just be open to that.
Good answer. I, I don't even really know what to change in like from both sides of it, like it's, for me, it's just like, like Skip saying, there's some guys that you might need to do certain little things, a little different for, some guys are receptive in different ways. But it's one of those things that I know, uh, yourself, the guys that are running the programs and the volunteers chewing on that. And they're able to kind of make those little adjustments here and there for the guys. There's no one program that's gonna be the same from the next, uh, every single program should be completely different from the guys, to the environments, to what's going on. Every single person's different. So it's, uh, constantly ebbs and flows with it of, uh, what you need to do on each program. So it's like, it, it's kind of tough to pick one thing or anything like that that you would want to change. But it's just kind of like giving that environment and that's the biggest thing, get guys out to Montana, uh, put them together with their brothers and.
Yeah, I mean, and Josh, I think, I think we've learned over the years, you know, thankful that I've been involved three, three different times. And, you know, the first program to the third, definitely, you know, it, it was the same format, but we learned a lot. And I learned a lot too as a volunteer. And, um, you know, there were challenges, the first program had its challenges, the second, the third, they all had their different ones. Some of, most of them were weather related, um, it's, but it, but it all had the same trend a lot of the time. Like the beginning part, that middle, like, ah, this is really working. And then that euphoric last couple of days, that's just, uh, amazing. And I, and I'm really happy because I feel like we've been able to adapt and really, um, you know, kind of cater to those individual program participants. And it's, it makes me really happy too, just like this, because I live in North Carolina, I live a lot closer. So I'm able to keep a physical kind of connection with these guys as well and have, say Jelly and Skip and, you know, some of the other guys that have come. Like I rock climb a lot and there's a couple of guys that rock climb, so we're, we're gonna be setting up some trips to do that. So building those relationships, I, I have learned that if we surround ourselves with like-minded individuals and we meet up and link up with them as much as possible, that like familiarity builds in. And it's, it's just a big, it's all part of the program. And it makes me happy to kind of facilitate, help facilitate this in what miniscule way that I can from here, as well as going out to Montana and helping be a volunteer every year.
If I could add just one more thing, um, this, this isn't something to improve. I just, I want everybody out there that hasn't been on one of these to, I think the key to all this is every night after every day, whether we're sitting by a campfire or, um, sitting down at dinner, um, we go around the, the, the room and everybody talks about what they're, what they're grateful for that day or what, you know, what had the biggest impact on them. And to me, that's kind of the key to success. It's, it's, um, forcing and allowing time to reflect on, on just the amazing opportunity that they had that day. Whether it was catching a fish or, you know, watching the sunrise, you know, whatever it was, to be able to, to go back and reflect on it, um, I think is really important. So I, I'd say that's, that's a sustain, keep doing that. Cause that, that's, I think that's the, uh, the secret recipe right there.
Absolutely. Um, good question right here from Josh. Not this Josh, but I do have a question before we start, this Josh's question, um, coming from somebody with a red beard, uh, brown hair, kind of overweight because of this whole COVID deal. Uh, Skip, how does it feel to be the only one not wearing a Big Sky Bravery shirt?
I realized that about halfway through, I was like, well, how do you know this is a Big Sky Bravery shirt? Maybe it says Big Sky Bravery on the back.
So here's a good question, uh, with everything going, uh, this is from Josh, uh, here in Montana. Uh, with everything going on with the COVID, how do you, uh, see the mission evolving this year and where can people help contribute the most? That's a really, really good question. Um, so what we're doing now is, um, you know, Big Sky Bravery will always be a nonprofit for active duty special ops. That's what we were founded for, that's what we've been successful with, and that's what we've kept evolving to do better at. Um, unfortunately, we only started this thing five years ago instead of two thousand and one. Um, a lot of Americans don't know this, but this is the longest active war in American history. And, uh, they're still fighting it, special operations over there, a lot of military personnel are over there, they're still fighting it. I remember two thousand and one, just like everybody else did. So with that being said, to answer your question specifically, um, we had two task forces unfortunately that were canceled, right when this whole COVID thing, you know, cracked down. And, uh, that was, uh, nine people that weren't able to come out. Uh, one of them unfortunately was a very, very, uh, it's heartbreaking that they weren't able to because they had unfortunately two suicides within fifty days. And one, um, I can't say the definition of it, but one small circle of people. You know, that's tough. Uh, we had the right volunteers lined up for it, we had the right experiences lined up for it, it just didn't happen. So those nine people will be coming into Big Sky Bravery. Our first programs always start the end of June, Bryce always runs them. So with the backlog of that, we're still going to handle the capacity the rest of this year. Um, we've had some generous donors that, um, have been able to contribute. But more importantly, the DOD shut down, um, all non-essential travel, uh, until the end of June. So where does that leave us? That's a great question. Big Sky Bravery, thanks to someone in, uh, in Big Sky, uh, Eric, uh, we're gonna do our first ever float trip. And this float trip is gonna be in June and it's gonna be for veterans that, um, have left the SOF units that we currently work with. If the DOD continues to ban all non-essential travel, there are a lot of people in the veteran community. Skip and I were talking about this yesterday and actually the day before that, uh, that he's gonna help us identify the need, Big Sky Bravery, that deserve it and can benefit from tremendously. So we will always go on, we will always prevail. We will always make sure that people have the right opportunities to come out. If these veterans, uh, uh, this whole, you know, travel ban, you know, coronavirus deal keeps up, we will continue to, to operate at a, at a normal capacity, which is growth, 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 growth. So Josh, thanks, a great question, um, how can people help contribute the most? You know, look, man, I, finances are tough, um, running a nonprofit is not easy. I've almost lost everything twice since doing this financially. My wife and I spent every single dollar that we had trying to get this thing off the ground. So in times like this, I'm not gonna ask for money. Um, it's not the right thing to do. If you have a, a capacity to give, then, then do it, man, because people need it. But I'm not gonna ask you to do that. You've heard these, you know, these, these stories from Skip and Jelly, um, you know, how deserving that, you know, they are to, to, to come to this. But I think the best thing that, that everyone can do right now is, I'm not gonna say social distance. Uh, I have different viewpoints on a lot of different things, but, um, just, just continue to pray, uh, for those who are deployed. Continue to, to, to pray for those who are currently home, that are battling things, that can't come out of these things right now, just non-essential travel. And just do everything that you can to be a great American. If you have the financial capacity to give and do it, um, we're also looking for some in-kind gear, which we're gonna send out a list in the next couple of weeks, um, identifying some different options. But, um, you know, I know you, um, all the people that support Big Sky Bravery, keep America in your hearts in prayers and especially those that are overseas. So, uh, next question, uh, from Tom in North Carolina. What do you equate your drive and patriotism to and what was the best piece of advice you see you're gonna give to someone? Damn, that's a good one. Uh, what do I equate my brother-in-law? Yeah, I mean, he's my hero, uh, I started this thing for him. Now I look at my father, uh, who was in the Marine Corps, my grandfather served thirty years, um, you know, both, um, during the Vietnam conflict. I, I think that's part of it, you know, my, my dad really instilled patriotism at, at a young age. And he always told me to give a hell of a lot more than I take, which I think a lot of people could benefit from. And, uh, yeah, I didn't serve, you know, I didn't do it. And I don't know why, but I didn't do it. I, I feel like I can, I need to do everything I can to make up for that. And what Big Sky Bravery has given me is an opportunity to, um, interact with, um, brothers that I never knew I had or I never knew I missed. Um, they are family to me, I'd give my life for any of them. And, uh, it, it opened up a whole new channel for me. The best advice that I can ever, uh, that I was ever given, um, I've been chewed out on these things, you know? I've, I've made some dumb calls, we all make mistakes. I think the best advice that I could give is, um, I went to New York to try and make money. You know, always chase that. And the best advice I could give is just find something that you love and, and do it with respect and honesty and truth, you know? There's always gonna be people who try to ruin you when you try to do great things. My, one of my best friends, Sean Hertz, who, uh, um, helped me get Big Sky Bravery off the ground, he was our chairman for a long time. He said that whenever you start something, uh, to try and change the hearts of men, uh, the evil part of, of the world, whether, what side you believe in or not, is gonna come after you tenfold. And it damn sure has since I started this thing. But I know that the more that I get attacked on a personal level or, um, you know, spiritual, I believe, uh, that means we're doing the right thing and we're on to something big. You know, but don't get long-winded on this thing at all. But I have one more thing I'd like to say real quick. And, um, Bryce and I have been good friends for, for a few years now. In the whole nonprofit world, people need to understand one thing, everybody is doing something great. One hundred percent, whoever started it, whoever works for it, um, whoever's involved with it, you all carry on a great mission.
Yep.
There's no reason for hostility, there's no reason for any of that stuff. Continue to do what you do because you started it and you do it for the right reason. There's plenty of money to go around, there's plenty of volunteers to go around, there's plenty of resources to go around, believe in what you do. And that's all I'm gonna say about that option.
Yeah, and, and you know, I mean, and I'm sure these guys can attest, Josh, like the, the community didn't make it easy for you to, to get accepted to this as well. You know, I mean, it's just part of our nature, you know, and, and it's funny, I have a really good friend, Dave Camarillo, I always joke with, we, we always say yes. Like, and you know, you, they put you through the wringer, like they put you through the test, the loyalty test, and you kept saying yes. And I think, uh, I think a lot of people would have backed down from that. I think they would have thrown in the towel and like, this isn't worth it. They don't want me, you know, like this isn't what I want to do anymore. But we freaking stuck around, man, you know, and, and time after time, you, they, they prodded your loyalty and you showed them that you're there. And I think that paid huge dividends. Skip, you guys tell me different, like, this is, this is a amazing experience to see somebody kind of come into a community and, and, and help support it like you guys have. And it wasn't easy and it still isn't.
Yeah, biggest thing I know is going into program and sending my guys, it's like, the guys that Josh picks to be volunteers, to run the programs, like they have our complete trust and we won't open up or do anything if we don't have the trust from people that we're with. And the fact that we know we can go to these programs and feel safe, uh, be able to talk about anything and everything, knowing that you're not gonna go run around doing this or that. It's the, like, we continuously, every single person that goes through, we scrutinize every single one of them. Josh scrutinizes every single guy that comes to it, because not everybody can come be a volunteer with us just because of who we are, what we do. And it's one of those things of Josh is always constantly making sure that he's protecting us. So we can work, continue to protect the country and the world. Hey, Josh asked me, he's like, hey, do you not want to show your face? And it's, there's something that I sat here and pondered for the last week of, hey, do I show my face on social media? It's, it's those simple little things that Josh has always been willing to make sure he protects us. Uh, and it's those little things like that is why we love and care about this program and we want to be a part of this program. We want to send guys to it is because he is always wanting to protect us.
Yep, well said. Josh, we got any more questions?
We have one more. So we wanted to shut this thing down around seven, um, nine o'clock where, where Skip is. So that means it's cigar time and, uh, hint winding down. And so this, this is actually a really good question. What did you guys do to decompress prior to coming out to your program? And what have you done after that, uh, to continue the, the decompression model?
Prior, so prior to the program?
Yeah, and after, I guess is what Shelley said, yep.
I'll tell you that prior to the program, uh, my decompression habits probably weren't that healthy. They probably involved alcohol more than anything. You, you know, you, like I said, you, you get locked into this, um, this, you just become distant. You become, you don't wanna, you don't wanna talk, you don't, you know, you want to just come home and, uh, decompress so you can go back to work and perform. And usually that means being alone, you know, let me, let me just go be by myself, uh, and be alone. And I think, you know, that's, that has changed since I went through the program. You know, I'm definitely, uh, I think much more compassionate, much more understanding, uh, with my family, um, that they need me, they need my time. And I don't think I was given them that before. And so to me, that's, that's kind of what I learned was I, I got me time, decompression time in Montana. And it made me realize what's really important in my life. And so I was able to bring that home and strengthen my bond with my wife and my son. So, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you ran, you went to tribute dinner last year, you saw that firsthand when Shirley got up and spoke. Cause that one, man, that was like, like all the, that's where all the toilet paper went. It didn't go to COVID.
Oh, I was waiting for that Bryce Mahoney singer.
That's it, that's it.
For me to decompress before, um, I'd probably say it was almost non-existent. For me, it's like at work, it's like, alright, we're doing this this week. Once we hit Friday or Saturday, depending on when training ends, like what are we doing next week? And I immediately focus on the next task and it's, what do I gotta prepare my gear? What do I gotta prepare mentally? What do I need to do? So it's, there was very, very little time to decompress before, uh, and I had always thought I was decompressing, doing things like hanging out by campfire in my backyard, hanging out with my buddies and things like that. But I truly never realized that I hadn't been decompressing until I was on the program. But when I went on the program, uh, three years ago, it was at that point, three years divorced at that time. And it was, I hadn't fully realized I hadn't even processed it. And that was three years after I'd been divorced, let alone, should have been four years before that. But it's right then and realize like, I haven't decompressed about anything. And that's where at that program, like Skip was saying earlier, like the last night, like I completely broke down, uh, to where it's like, wow, I need to deal not only with my personal stuff, I need to deal with work stuff. And since then, it's like, I can now see a, a difference in myself, uh, to where I know I'm now a better man for my family or my brother, sister, parents, I've been much more part of their lives since then. I know one of my teammates, I went on the program with, he sat there and told me, he's like, yeah, man, he's like, this saved my marriage. And like, hearing that from my teammates that go to these programs, like I, I know that they're struggling the same thing with not knowing how to decompress. And then getting that week long of AID compressed, then when they go back home, they're a better father, better husband, better like brothers to their teammates and everything like that. And for me now, it's like decompressing, it's like, what do I gotta do to get back to Montana? Every opportunity I get, like, oh, I can go to Montana this week. I, like being a teammate here now, I'm like, what training can I set up? So I can get back to Montana, because that's where I. So I can get back to Montana, because that's where I know I can decompress and be there and like, fully relaxed.
Yeah, and, and, you know, as somebody that helps all veterans and active duty help transition from the military, one of the things that I've realized is people that live where they, where they want to be as far as the activities and the environment that they want to be in, it doesn't matter what they do for a profession, their happiness levels are so much better because they're around, they're in the environments that they want to be in. If you're a mountain person, go to the mountains, if you're a beach person, go to the beach, work at a 7-Eleven, I guarantee you will be happier than living in Atlanta, making six figures. I can, I can guarantee that, and, you know, it's always great seeing smiles, you know, especially when they're derived from nature, nature in Montana.
Here's one other question that just came in, it's actually a really good one. Why are you so selective on your volunteers? And why are you so selective on your volunteers, and how can people get in this pipeline? We're selective because of who we work with. You know, I've always been selective, I would rather surround myself with people that challenge me and, you know, or care about, you know, going through life with me, because it's really tough, right? The reason why is we are under an intense amount of, I don't know the right word for it, other than just how sensitive our mission is. Out of all the units that we work with, I've asked every single one of them if they have another nonprofit, you heard from these two, and they don't have anything. As far as, you know, active duty guys, decompressing, leaving their families, going back to combat again. That's not me coming up with some data saying, oh my God, we're, we're the only ones doing it, or we're better than everybody else on the forefront, no, that's just me saying that that's what is the reality of the situation that we're facing. Due to this, we have to have volunteers that we can trust, we have to have volunteers that know what they're doing in Montana, because things can happen in the backcountry, and you're, no one's above the law out there. You know, we have to have people that are entrepreneurial mindset to have the right ideas to help people, we have to have people that are grounded at their house. We have to have people that have a solid reputation in the community. There's multiple things that go into our, our pipeline, I mean, the average time it takes for a volunteer to go through is around six months. It's not because we're elitist or we think we're better, it's because we need to protect people like Skip and Jelly when they come out here, and pictures aren't getting thrown up all over social media, you know, because, because, and this is just the honest reality, because they think it's cool of what we do, they think people that we work with are cool because of, you know, what they do, it's not cool at all, it's ruining people's lives, and what they do is horrific, you know, you know, it's imperative, but that's the toll. Hopefully that answers the question on that one, we don't want to, trying to be.
I'd like to add too, you know, just going back to the, to the Big Sky Bravery slogan, get out what you put into it, you know? I was lucky enough to be, to be invited to the first program because there were a couple of guys from my, my former unit there, and that was kind of my testing grounds after being vetted by you and everybody else through the community, and, you know, that was my chance to step up and be a volunteer, and like, I was there to work, you know, it was awesome that I was in this opportunity, this beautiful house, doing these awesome things, but like, every day, I knew what do I need to do to be, to serve these guys? And the same thing on the second program, and then we offered to kind of run my own on the third go-around, like, having another volunteer, like Ron that was on there, like, I didn't have to say anything to him, like, he was on it. Like, he just knew what needed to be done, he did it, and like, as, as somebody that deals with like event management and those things, to have like motivated volunteers, guys that get it, it's so refreshing to have that, and, and you have to be selective about it, because there are, you know, there are people that don't, that don't share that same value, or share that same tenacity towards something, because maybe they, they, they don't have the same vested interest at the beginning of it. And I'm just really fortunate that I've been able to do it and show that I'm, I'm really, I really love doing it, and I'm willing to facilitate being a volunteer, leading a program, like, I don't care, man, get me out there, I just love seeing these smiles on these guys' faces, when they get to wake up and be out there another day and just not have to do anything, I mean, I think it's like the best thing on earth for me.
Alright, so, thank you all for, for joining in on this tonight. You know, this kind of reminded me of a task force, honestly, just sitting around a campfire and talking about things. You know, I, I just want to, to tell you, Skip, and you, Jelly, just thank you so much for your time on this, and stepping out of the security and saying what we're doing, giving an inside look on it, and just the vulnerability that you guys have. I love you guys like brothers, I'm just really, really grateful that you gave us all the opportunity to get to know you better and to answer questions. The last thing that I will say is, to re-answer that one question, the best advice anyone's ever given me is Ned. Ned told me, the four things you always need to remember are character, competency, passion, and humility. That's the best advice I've ever given, just answered that question. So, we are going to continue to do these things. Bryce and I are, we haven't even, you haven't even scratched the surface on us two yet, we, we're gonna start just going on this thing for free, or free-falling, I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that are gonna come up. So, we're gonna do it once a month, and, and answer some, some more questions, you know, anything that you guys have, we're gonna bring up topics that are relevant towards the nonprofit community, special operations community, and what's just going on in the world. Share our feedback on that, and then also try to invite as many operators that are willing to share their story on this thing as we can, so. Skip, Jelly, thank you so much for your time, I'll let you guys close it out with whatever you guys want to say. Bryce, when you get done closing it out, we're gonna end the meeting, really good to see you guys tonight, so Skip, go for it.
I just want to thank everybody that's on here watching. To me, if you're here watching, it means you care and you're a great American, so thank you for all you do.
I just want to say thank you to everybody that's part of Big Sky Bravery, the board members, Sean, Josh, Bryce, Dustin, Mitch, all you guys, like, you're changing hundreds of guys' lives for the better, changed mine for the better, continue to the hard work that you're doing, you're making a difference in so many people's lives, and thanks for that, thanks to everybody for tuning into this tonight, it's been a lot of fun. Lots of fun memories with Bryce and Josh and everything, and it's been a great time, and stay safe.
Yeah, and everybody watching, you know, you have the opportunity to, to ask questions, to give us questions to do this. I, with my organization, I've been doing these videos every day for April, and it gets tough sometimes to have conversations, so if you want to have questions answered, submit them to susan@bigskybraveryboard. We would, we love asking questions, we love finding out this information, obviously, we're not going to violate any OPSEC or anything that would be remotely damaging to what's currently going on or what has gone on, so don't even think about it, but there's plenty of questions that we could, that could be asked of these guys, and we really want your, your input, and, you know, for everybody watching on Facebook, thanks for, for dealing with the, you know, maybe you probably didn't hear them the best way up on the webcam right now, but we'll get that fixed for next time, and I'm just looking forward to doing it again, guys, and, you know, just, I guess, best thing to do would be saying, oh yeah, let's finish it.
One, one final thing, we're gonna upload this to our YouTube channel, which I found out was in my name, not Big Sky Bravery's name, I'm not very tech savvy. We will upload this tomorrow, we will send out mail chaps, if you want to share it with anybody, feel free. Thank you for joining in tonight, and we'll see you next time.
Peace out.
Stay classy, America.